Good evening and welcome to the November 28, 2023, meeting of the Spack and Kill Union Free School District Board of Education. Please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.01 is public comments on consent agenda items. Do you have any public comments on consent agenda items? Any board comments or questions? Okay, I'm entertaining a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Come on.
Second, one favor.
Aye.
Aye, pass by zero. That brings us to our discussions. Item 9.01, Mr. Lanzoni.
All right.
Was that quick enough, Mr. Lanzoni?
That was pretty quick. I appreciate you inviting myself and our soccer team here today. As you can see in the board report, it really was a tremendous fall season for all our teams. I'm so proud of our coaches, our athletes, our program. Participation was great and we had a lot of, a lot of success. And tonight, we're going to recognize and honor a very special team from this fall, and it's our varsity boys soccer team. Coach Cross, Coach Meyer, and Coach Villa. As many of you know, they made it to the state final four, state championship game, and they finished second among all Class B schools in the state. Tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. Congratulations. You know what impressed me with this group was how they got better and better throughout the year. And you see a lot of teams do that. Obviously, the first scrimmage, first game, you know, some rough spots and teams gradually get better. But this team, and Coach and I were talking about it, they seem to get better in the playoffs. You know, as individuals, as teams, you gelled and you came together. And you always want to peak. All we do is ask for, you know, for an athletic director and coach, we ask that you try to get better and better every day. And you were the epitome of that. You did it right to the end. You peaked right when it was most important. And I really think that's a credit to the coaching staff, and I think it's a credit to our junior and senior leadership on this team that really led the way. We have outstanding young players, a good mix of upperclassmen and lowerclassmen. But a lot of times that mix is, you know, good or bad. And a good team is, has talent. A great team has a good mix that gel together. And it takes leadership for that to happen, so I'm proud of you for that. Playoff run, I'm going to do a little review. We started off with a 2-1 victory in a section championship against Roundout. They went on to defeat the Westchester champion, Kyo Academy, 5-1. And you're going to see a theme here. We kind of took care of from Albany down. Next, we went down to Long Island to face a very tough Coral Place team, and they gritted out a PK victory. Then we went on to the state final four where we played the Albany-area Mechanicville champion, defeating them 3-0. That set up the state championship game against Buffalo East Aurora. It was a 2-1 game. Just incredible back and forth game. Could have went either way, and the Spartans came away with the state championship runner-up plaque. And again, just Coach Meyer's got that. They're just a tremendous, tremendous honor. I'm going to show a short video that I put together, but before that, I just want, I just want you all to realize what a special accomplishment this was. It's been 16 years since we had a soccer team make it to the final four. Dr. Fannueli got a chance, him and I were talking to a number of players from that 2017 that came to your final four to support you. And that's, that's what Spack and Kill is all about. People graduate, they come back. They come back to the school to see their teachers. They come back to see their coaches. They come back to support players. And what kind of took us was they still talk. You know, they say they have a text chain, 2017 text chain. They still communicate. They congratulate when somebody has a baby, or they congratulate when somebody gets married. And I hope that you continue, that's what sports does, and I hope that you continue this special bond that you had this year. That's very unusual. I hope it continues throughout your adulthood, beyond Spack and Kill. And I hope that you stick together and have each other, others' backs, you know, beyond this year. But beyond soccer, Coach and I were talking about this last week in our meeting. People came up to him and I, whether it was Middletown, Goshen, or Long Island, and they would commend us not only for the play, but how they conducted themselves in the locker room, how they conducted themselves getting off the bus, how they conducted themselves before and after a game. And that's what's most, you know, we're most proud of. And that starts with our teachers, administration, coaches, these young men, and the families, you know, the soccer families. Whatever you're doing, you're raising these kids right, all right? And I appreciate the parents' support. In a day and age where, you know, you read a lot about, you know, parents, you know, tough parents. These are not tough parents. These are supportive parents, and their kids are outstanding. They represented Spack and Kill very well, our Spack and Kill community very well. And I am beyond proud of this entire group right here. So I'd like to show a short little video, and I put this together. You know, Dr. Fannueli invited us to come, I think it was two days after the championship game. You know, he was, he was very excited to-
I was impressed.
He was very excited to show, you know, how proud we are of you. So I said, "Two days," you know, "I want to put together a little video montage" just to give the board a little feel of what that two-and-a-half-week run in the playoffs was like, because it's amazing. You know, it's draining. I was, I was exhausted. I'm just standing there in the cold trying to keep warm, you know. I can't imagine, you know, the coaches and the players, you know, what that two-and-a-half-week run was like. But they were awesome. And this kind of gives you a little feel for it. I want to thank Salamu and Dylan Updike for allowing me to use some pictures from their soccer Instagram account. They did a great job with the Instagram account. You know, you always talk, you know, you hear kids abusing social media. These guys were, they're awesome. All the posts were positive, encouraging, and, you know, just another feather in their cap on all the things that they do right. One last thing, raise your hand if you went to a girl's soccer game and you helped out as a sideline ball boy. Raise your hand. These guys were practiced, and instead of going home, they would stay and support the girl's soccer team and run the sidelines. Usually, we get, you know, some middle school kid to run it. These guys, we had the most talented sideline ball boys in the- But again, I would always thank them because I know it's going, you know, they got homework and they have all sorts of stuff, but they would take the time to support the girls and help us because we need them. So just another thing I wanted to point out and thank you for. So I hope you enjoy this video. It's, you know, it's short, but it kind of just gives you a little bit of highlights. I forgot to call them up. I wanted to call them up before we started, so if we could just, well, I don't know.
Yeah.
The board wants to say a few words or call them up now, or?
Why don't we talk first, this way we're not- Anyone want to start?
Sure. So you took out Rhonda Valley, which is a little bit tough for me. It's my alma mater, but I'm glad it was you guys.
Sorry.
That was a good, that was a good start to that. I got to see you guys play against the Kyo Academy over at FDR, and that was really, it was a really great game. You guys were awesome there. I said at the last meeting, you guys didn't hear this possibly, so I just wanted to say, you know, it's awesome that you guys have, you know, this balance between your personal life, your family life, your soccer life, and your academic life. There's a lot going on, and you all did us so proud. It was a great run, and we're happy and proud of you all.
Congratulations. Certainly, my, my, two of my sons played soccer at Spack and Kill, and I can attest through that experience to what you said earlier, Marco, about how close-knit the Spack and Kill soccer community is and how closely people stay in touch with one another afterwards. I think this will be, you know, just a source of such fond memories for you as you mature and go through the rest of your career at Spack and Kill, and then through college and beyond. Such a warm memory to have. We're all very proud of you here, but I'm especially happy to think of all of the connections and memories you'll be able to nurture as you, as you move on in the ways that Mark has suggested. So congratulations. Great to see Spack and Kill soccer tradition carry on in such a vibrant way.
Yes, congratulations. It's always really special seeing these championship runs go, the way the Spack and Kill community really gets behind it. And it's something for everybody to really, to look forward to in seeing these updates. And, you know, we, we had it with the baseball season, and then you guys follow right up with it as well. And it's just so awesome when this stuff happens in our community and, you know, getting behind a team and getting behind the families and all of us having the same thing to cheer for, for, throughout the entire run. So you guys will remember this for years and years to come, and you'll always look back fondly of you and your friends and your teammates, and even your parents on the sidelines cheering for you. It's something that they'll always remember as well. So thank you, guys. Great job. And we really appreciate everything that you did and all the hard work that you put into it.
Wow.
Did you win any games?
You know that I'm biased. Three reasons that I'm, why I'm biased. My son plays for the team. My son's friends play on the team, and my son plays on the team. This team is not a team, but a brotherhood. They doubted you, and you proved them wrong. Your work ethic, perseverance, determination, sleepless nights, pasta dinners, copious school assignments, all this. And the team, you did the impossible and imaginable by winning the 2023 section championship. I'm so proud of your accomplishment. Looking forward to next year.
Keep it short and sweet. Congratulations. From what I can see, you guys are all amazing. You put a lot of hard work into everything you've done in terms of academics, soccer itself and everything. So congratulations, guys. It's awesome.
I guess just to follow up what everyone said, just congratulations. Someone said, Mr. Cohen, about community. It really does bond the community, and you see those stands and everyone. I mean, it was cold, and everyone was still there, running to their car, trying to find something else that might be in it to wear while they were there. But just, just a great run and fun. And coaches, the brand of soccer, I mean, I was a coach in a previous life, not soccer, but basketball. But the brand of soccer, you can really tell the kids were executing, you know, things that you wanted them to execute. It wasn't just kids running around out there, and they did a great job in execution. And it was almost like a nice combination of toughness with finesse. That really, I think, obviously brought you right to the, you know, the pinnacle. We are so proud. I know everyone always wants to win, but what you did is amazing and is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, is just as good. And just, just congratulations. And I hope we did some homework over the time. You know, the more you're talking about that, I'm not-
Not a lot come-
They caught up now. But congratulations. Be proud. And as Mr. Lanzoni said, it was really remarkable to see that 2017 come back to support you and kind of that brotherhood that, you know, Ms. Barnes had mentioned. And you guys have that now, and you always have this, you always have this state finalist trophy, and, you know, you can look at it forever. So congrats.
Picture time. Yeah, let's get a picture. If we do one last, they're pretty good at posing for pictures, as you can see. So if we could, you know, gather right here with the board and do a little group shot of your presence.
Get the coaches to work.
Maybe a hardware in the middle.
Do you have your shirt?
I'm usually the one taking pictures, so I'm going to get in this one.
Where are they facing, Mr. Lanzoni?
All right, let me get it straight.
Screen, all right, screen.
Face me maybe two rows. Might have to take a knee on the first row. Yeah, first row taking knee. We can go in the back.
Who's going behind Coach?
Who's taking a picture?
Sandra, want to take the picture? Yeah, parents, if you want to come up like they're doing, go ahead and take pictures. It's all good.
Guys look good.
You're dealing with the paparazzi. Yeah, well said. Congrats, guys.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the meeting or you got homework to do.
Where's Mr. Gerard? Mr. Gerard, is it, is it time for the- All right, so they have to come back.
Yeah, you guys are welcome.
Thank you so much.
Hey.
Makes it real, makes it real good with your stuff instead of just out in the field.
Yeah.
Appreciate you having me.
Yeah, it was good doing it two weeks later.
Yeah, have a good night. Thank you. Great job. Good job, guys.
Just talking to Mark is like, oh, Coach is going to put out a call for you.
Yeah, they, a couple of kids responded, and they said, "Oh, it's him."
It's better. Slow it down.
I haven't seen him since.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you very much for that. Item 9.02 is our secondary administration update. So let's see. We have Mr. Malkisher or Mr. Dard?
Rock, paper, scissors and that.
Mr. Malkisher chose Mr. Dard to go first.
All right.
Okay, Steve. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, as always, for having us come. And tonight, yep, you can put up the slides. Tonight, I'm going to, I don't know, I've probably mentioned Tom Yurkovic from time to time. Tom is our greeter here at Todd Middle School, so any parent gets to know Tom very well because they have to, he's the one who lets them into the school. But Tom does a lot of other things besides being the greeter, which I think is pretty unique. You know, we talk about all the great things about the district, and, you know, a lot of those things happen because we just have a culture that just allows people to grow, to do what they love. And we see that with the students. We see that with the staff members, and it's, I think it's what makes this such an enriching district. And so one of the things that Tom has been doing for a number of years, which I've been, I send emails to the district office from time to time because I just find it so great, is that he does a monthly math challenge. So Tom originally was a, was a substitute in the, in the building, and then he became our greeter. And he wrote a little, he wrote a little something that I will just read, which I know we don't usually do, but this was Tom's kind of- Tom, because I asked him to just give a little history of the monthly math challenge. And he said, "It was started in September of 2017 to encourage students to try math problems for pure enjoyment and to instill a sense of perseverance when trying to do so. To do this, we award points for just trying a problem. In this way, all students have the opportunity to win a prize each month whether or not they get the correct answer. They can try as many times as they like, ask for help, and work with friends or family to try to solve it. The problems are not meant to be read and solved immediately, but rather to take time to read, investigate, and think about before attempting to solve. The point is to try and to be persistent." So, and I've, and there's student, you know, you'll come, I'll come by, you know, outside in the hallway, and there'll be students up talking to Mr. Yurkovic about the problem and stuff. It's just, it's just a great thing that, you know, you typically wouldn't think of a greeter, you know, involved in this kind of stuff. The challenge is open to all students, faculty, and staff. I've tried it a couple of times, and I find it to be pretty challenging. And he's got, and he's had sponsors who sponsor prizes, which has been great. So brief history, it was started in 2017 as a hard copy, paper version. And then in 2018, he moved to, he's got a website that the students know about, and the students go on. That's where they find it. And originally, he used it, as I said, he was to motivate students when he was being a substitute teacher. And he just found it to be something that, and it just kind of grew, like the way things, these things do, you know. You go to the next slide. And then this is just some information over the last couple of years of, you know, the number of participants and the number of prizes that have been given. He's had Stewart's, Wendy's, and Jersey Mike's have all donated. You know, they just donate all that, all that food. And like he says on the screen there, you know, everybody receives a free Wendy's Frosty at the end of the year, no matter what. And like Tom, you know, he takes the time to do all this, you know, it's really, he just, it's just, it's just what he does. You know, in addition to the math, he also is a big weather and NASA lover. So you'll see stuff on space exploration. He'll just put things up on that, up on that board. You might, you might have seen it when you come in. You might be wondering why there's a space station on the board. And it's because Mr. Yurkovic has put it there. So he's just, it's just, it's just a great thing. You go to the next one. And then these are just a breakdown for this year of just the different grades that are involved and the students in each grade that are involved. You can see that, you know, again, this is something that the students just know to go on. And, you know, we put the announcements in, but it's really students who have just, you know, grown, just got to know Mr. Yurkovic and love what he does, and, you know, and they're involved in it. You go to the next slide. And then these are the students who are on the honor roll for, this was for November 2023. So you can see the sixth grade have been very busy with the, with the math challenge. And, you know, like I said, I'm just, it's just one of those things that I just, really touches me about the kind of person he is and the way that students respond to him. And it's just another one of those things that, you know, at Spack and Kill, you know, we just saw a great thing with athletics. And then here's like a thing with, you know, a different type of student, you know, like a math student. And that's what I love about the district is that there's so many different avenues for students to feel inclusive of and to be who they want to be and who they are, and I just love that, including the staff and including, you know, Mr. Yurkovic. And then the last slide is just, just, he just put up a slide of his website, and this is how the students access the monthly math challenge. So like I said, I thought it'd be just a nice little thing, just to kind of acknowledge. I do send this information to the, to the district office from time to time, but I've never kind of talked to the board yet about it. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I thought it was a nice feature of Todd that I'd like to make public. So thank you. And thank you, Mr. Yurkovic.
Questions?
It's actually like a Good Will Hunting type thing up on the board. Savant coming by and solving it.
Yeah.
So they can submit multiple submissions. I saw there's a number of students and many more submissions.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, and then, like I said, he'll be just the other day. I saw, it was actually one of our avid students was there discussing. She was discussing the math problem. He'll give hints.
Does he give hints?
And then he'll send them back to try it again.
Good.
You know, yeah. So it's, 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 it's just a, he's a sweetheart.
That's cool.
And if you, if you, I've talked to him about it, and he will just talk about the math and the challenge. And he's excited about the sponsors. I remember him telling me about the sponsors last year in particular. I think it was Jersey Mike's at that time, and, you know, I was, I was over at Jersey Mike's one time, and I saw the person who was donating the stuff, and she loved him, and it was just this nice, she has this nice way about him. And he's just, he's so passionate about this. It's actually nice. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome.
Does he come up with the problems himself?
I don't think so. I mean, they're, if he did, that'd be pretty amazing. Because they're, they're, he might do some of them.
I imagine there's-
I'll, I'll ask him about that because they're pretty complicated. And at first, I'm like, "Oh, I can do this," and I'm challenged.
Do you have, is the website, is it widely known? Because I'd be curious to take a look. I have a couple colleagues at work, actually.
I will, I, I think, yeah, let me find out from him if it's, if it's, if it's okay to share to anybody, and then I will send something to Dr. Fannueli.
I'd be curious to look at it.
Yeah.
Does anybody know how to spell Yurkovic? It's a Mr. Y.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm just going to say a few things, Hannah, before the picture goes up, or the pictures go up. So this is something I'm really very excited about presenting to you today. So we've done so many incredible improvements to our facilities over the years. And I'm somebody that's been here for over 20 years, and, you know, we talk a lot about continuous improvement. And, you know, we talk a lot about continuous improvement, but we do continuously improve. I mean, the high schools, you know, all of the buildings are beautiful. Most recently, at the high school, the field is breathtaking. It's something really to be proud of. So one of the things, and I'm sure the board members that have walked through the high school remembered a courtyard basically being a jungle, right? It was a couple of years ago that Dr. Valante and I talked about getting goats to actually come in and clear the area. Every few years, there's a class or there is a club that wants to take ownership, but it's hard because they come and they go. And then summer comes and, you know, who's going to maintain over the summertime? So a very incredible parent of our district was gracious enough to help us out with beautifying the courtyard. And wait till you see this, you won't, you won't believe it. So they basically took all the stone that was dug out when they put the elevator shaft in and they made a concrete stone wall that goes all along the path. Is that the movie one? Whichever, whichever one. So even, even things like the drainage, so that there's no water pressure against the new wall was all put in. So that it'll go right down the right culvert pipes that exist there now. But this is a beautiful, like, we're able to sustain this now. And before, it was basically a hill that was very difficult to, to maneuver, to get around. We have an MSD classes where they can make benches. You know, I want from here the kids to kind of take ownership and take this over. But now it's something to be proud of and it's something that when you walk in there, you don't feel overwhelmed. It's kind of like, it's clean and we got a, we got a fresh start. This is something that will last forever. Like I said, those stones are all cement, all cemented together. Yeah, and you can call it, you know, beautiful staircase to be able to get up to those areas. So, you know, I wanted this to be a surprise. It's been hard not to say anything. If anybody, Lori saw it, I'm like, shh. She came over to do an observation. Many of my teachers haven't seen it. So at the next faculty meeting, that's going to be, that's going to be something that's going to be on the agenda about moving forward. You know, how can we take advantage of this now beautiful space that we have? Gardening is possible. You check the water spigot that's in that area is operational, it's working. I don't know, it's just, it's so cool. I'm so, so happy that that's there. So, and the gentleman's name is, you guys know him, like, Eliana is still with me. He graduated several years ago.
Did it before pictures, Steve?
No. We wish, but...
Did they just finish it? So is it just recently finished?
Yeah, they just finished it, yeah.
So he brought, did students help with the construction or is it all...
Students will take, will take it from, yeah, we'll take it from here.
That walkway, that little path, the railing?
Walkway was there, the railing was there.
Railings were there?
The railing was there.
It was a case there was a emergency. Oh, all right.
And the plan was to use it at some point. So there are cameras that are out there already, but it just wasn't, it wasn't conducive to being used, so.
It wasn't level?
Well, yeah, no.
So your vision tables up on the left or down below on the grass on the right?
Down below, they didn't, they didn't touch. We're going to clean that up a little bit, but that's really not usable space because there's no staircase to go down. The railing is continuous all the way.
Right.
But I wanted to, you know, make sure we got, that we got this space. And he was gracious. He met with me, a couple of his workers, came up with like the plan aesthetically of what it was going to be like, the materials, how it was going to go down. I just think it came out, it came out amazing. So, yeah, that's cool. Thank you so much.
That's a great improvement.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
I can remember what it looked like.
It's quite a presentation, Mr. MacKishir.
Yeah, it reveals.
Yeah, that's cool.
Anybody have any questions or comments for either?
How long's it been in the large one?
About a month and then some weeks before kind of planning, planning everything out.
Quick, that's a quick term.
Yeah, he's got some really talented guys. I mean, if that's something, you know, I dabble and dabble a little bit with that. I think that would be at least like a $20,000, $25,000 job, especially because you can't get machines in there.
Right.
You know, so that everything is all done by hand. So it's just like old school with the hammer and knocking the stones just, you know, to fit right. They do it all by eye and then buckets with cement, throwing it in and whatever. Yeah, the only respite they had was, you know, the small skid steers, the walk behind skid steers to bring the gravel up because that was another challenge was the steep hill. And then from there, they have to do buckets and bring all that stone in by hand. It's a tough, tough job, lot of labor.
Interesting story. So this came about back when the high school had the renovations, what, 20 years ago?
Yeah.
A little after that. And an elevator, an elevator was put in. We used to have lifts at the high school that were just inside. But in order to build the elevator shaft, we really had to, the crew had to really chip out a lot of rock. If you notice, the high school was built on a giant rock. And all that rock was left in there.
In the shaft, in the elevator?
No, in the, in the courtyard area.
Yeah.
Because it was, there was no way to get it out. They actually took a lot of the stuff out with wheelbarrows. They literally were rolling wheelbarrows through the school, right? To get some stuff out. So it's really just been kind of left like that since, you know, the completion of that project, you know, probably back 20...
Yeah.
2011, 2010?
Right.
So, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, Lee said there was supposed to be a pool in the beginning, Lee Riley, right? When the first, like, when the high school was first designed?
Oh, back in the, back in the, like, 60s?
Well, Lee's the historian, right? He's been there as long as the building, so.
Please express our appreciation.
Yeah, we're going to do some of this.
That was really amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, item 10.01 is public comment on non-agenda items. If you have any public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, 10.02 is board correspondence. We did get an email from some parents about an incident on a bus. The administration did their investigation and was able to convey information back to the parents. And I think that was all successful. If anybody in the administration wants to add anything to that, feel free. Otherwise...
We had good conversation with the parent and, you know, I think everyone's understanding of what happened.
The board also did actually get another email from a former board member and it did not go to anybody else. I just realized that. Sandra, it may have went to you because I think it went to the board event, which I think you're normally on that email? Possibly?
Was it today?
It was November 25th.
Check one for Mary, sorry.
Yeah. And it was, it's interesting. I was able to watch the first part of it. It's a link to a podcast and it's related to a nationwide lack of proficiency in reading. So basically, there's some statistics in there. About 65% of 4th graders don't read at a proficient level. And it talked to the methods of teaching kids how to read and how a lot of this was brought out during COVID when parents were a little more involved with education of their children. So I would like to forward that over to our administration in case you ever have a chance to, to take a listen to some of those podcasts and maybe it could be a topic of future discussion for us.
So in the, in the realm of Small World, I had, I actually called Dr. Sawyer today for something completely different. I have a former Spack grad interested in attending Suzy Newpolt's possibly and just wanted to reach out, you know, to her and hook them up so they could talk. And she told me, she thought she had sent it to us. She thought maybe we got it when it went to the board. But it's the podcast that we've listened to last year. I forget the name of it.
Soul Story.
Yeah, Soul Story.
Yeah, right.
And it's probably about six, seven...
Yep.
In duration and I couldn't put it down. That's the right way of saying it when we were listening to it. I think it came out in November of last year. And we've done a lot with it. So it's really, if you looked in the news, there's a lot about the, called the science of reading, right? It's really talking about the whole language versus phonics. So we actually, our elementary principals also really did a deep dive into it. And they opened it up to faculty members to listen to it. And then they had talks about it. And, you know, I think John and Lori, do you want to add to that? Because I think even the, our approach, we felt, wasn't one way or the other. It was a blended...
Yeah, it really kind of, it just, it spurred conversation amongst us in talking about our programs and our approaches and how we don't have a one-size-fits-all approach. We do, you know, different programs where we explicitly teach phonics and then other programs that are more, we consider more whole language and really tailored towards the individual students. So it was nice to go through that podcast and then also have discussions afterwards of talking about how do we address it here at Spack and Kill.
Yeah, I would just add too, I think one of the things that we learned, I think, is that we feel pretty good about our approach to reading instruction. So it wasn't, you know, a five alarm fire for us. Like, we, I think, really looked at it pretty closely and feel like we're doing what we need to be doing, the way we should be doing it and really headed in the right direction. And we've done some pretty significant training.
Everybody's been...
Within the last year, along those lines. But that, that started actually before we were even involved with the podcast or talking about it in that kind of a way. So I think we're in good shape.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Just, I'd ask a quick question. Just curious, because the podcast I know talks about and it's been covered part very widely, the whole Lucy Callens controversy. And I know she's revised her curriculum. And so I'm just curious to know whether, what your perspective is on how that revision of her curriculum has sort of started to filter into, you know, either the curricula or the training? Just your perspective, not necessarily just here, but just, you know, more generally within, you know, within the K through 12 educational world.
Well, like, I don't think we bought into any of her revised work at this point, but what we've done to, to really put a focus on the phonics piece is ensure that every K5 teacher is trained in Orin-Gillingham. And especially a teacher wise, that's K12. So we want to make sure that every teacher has the ability, the knowledge to teach the direct instruction for phonics.
I think for us too, part of the context for us, and I think it's just kind of indicative about how we typically do approach things curriculum wise. You know, we started, there are two worlds with Lucy. There's reading world and there's writing world. And the writing world began for her first.
Right, first.
And I think as part of this discussion, those things don't often get separated. I still am quite a strong advocate for the workshop model for writing.
It's pervasive.
But, but, but we, we didn't, we didn't jump onto the reading units. I mean, we were starting to go down that road and we were going in that direction, but we didn't take it all too quickly. We may be accused of going maybe a little bit too slowly at times, but I think in this way, it really did benefit us. So, you know, I think the revisionary work that she's done, it's not, it doesn't really help us, I don't think. I think, I think we're, we're already in good shape without it.
That's interesting to hear. Yeah, you know, some school districts in New York City, right? New York City's the district that has sort of completely redirected its approach through all of this.
She responded, which was good.
Yeah.
The other side, I don't think responded.
Yeah, it's been a pretty heated controversy.
Again, it's similar to what happens is polarization. It's either this way or this way and we don't believe that. We believe that we want to look at this way and this way and make it what's best for us. And that's what we used the podcast for. The podcast was, was very interesting. Like, it's...
There's a lot of drama.
It's very, it's very interesting. And when it came out a year ago, it was like, it was pretty big in like the world of education, you know, as far as... But, you know, I was proud of the way I sent it off to everyone and then like a week later, we met for something else and like just about everyone had already listened to like all, all the episodes because no one could put it down. And it really led to rich conversations that you heard all about, you know, what we did, so.
Yeah, the Lucy piece was really interesting, but so was the fountain. But, you know, like, that's, that is impacting us, I think, how we're approaching things.
Yeah, the whole history, Mary Clay, Marie Clay, Marie?
Marie.
Yeah, and it just, it just was, so it's an interesting podcast if you haven't listened to it yet. That's good to hear.
Thank you for that. Okay, 11.01 is comments from the board. Any board comments?
What other things, what's our good set?
Um, yeah, I was looking for the update on the residency letter that we sent out. That was sent out? Is that correct? At the beginning of the year, we're going to request updates for, what, that was sent out?
Yes, we were seeking, it wasn't necessarily a residency letter. We were updating our, what do we want to call it?
Lease rental.
So, um, leases and rental agreements expire, like we just signed. So we wanted to make sure all of our renters and leasers, you know, just had updated paperwork on file. So we started that in October. I think the letter went out in October.
Yeah, early October.
We got some responses back and then we sent another letter out this month to follow up on, on getting those responses. Anything else with that?
No, just I think to emphasize that, you know, the initiative was really... Because part of what we realized were different buildings had been approaching those updates in different ways. So we had, you know, some buildings approaching it one way, but we, we realized that we had some leases that were, you know, well outdated. We didn't have anything updated at all. So then when we, you know, started crunching the numbers and looking at it, we ended up sending about 180 letters in early October and then we followed up. We knew it was going to be slow going, getting responses back, but we're chipping away at it and we'll, we'll get there. So we've sent a second letter, gotten some more back. And we'll, we'll probably go a third time through school messenger. And then if we need to start following up with, you know, individual families with phone calls, you know, that's, that's what we'll do. And then some consistency through all of the offices too. So we met with secretaries, the ones who are inputting that information and getting that information from families. So there's a common approach to, you know, how it's being entered into a spreadsheet and how we're going to update that moving forward. So it's a good, good thing for us.
Yeah, it's a systems change that I think will help us be aligned.
Are there districts that you're aware of that send out like a residency check each year? You know, they'll send out a letter to the, you know, to the students' families and saying, are you still in district and yes or no and what's your address? Because there was, they're looking at some of the policies. I don't know if it's necessarily very close to us, but there's some districts that are out there that send out that annual verification that you're still living in district, whether you own or you rent or you, you know, it just goes out to everybody at once. It's not picking and choosing. It just confirms, you know, you're signing something saying, yes, I still live in district.
Yeah, we don't do that, I don't believe we're, or ever have. So it's, it's interesting. I mean, I think we say, maybe in a different way, asking if you're planning, you know, if your, your child is going to attend school next year. So I guess by default, if they're, if you're saying yes, then you're saying that, you know, you're living in the district. But that's maybe something we do need to formalize in a different way.
Did the letters that we sent home, did any of the responses come back saying that they are no longer in district? Or has everybody so far come back saying that they didn't bring any, surface any that had a...
Not yet, no. So for those that have responded, yes, you know, they're, they updated their lease or rental agreement information. Or they might have some other living arrangement with families. So the ones that we've received so far, yeah, confirm that. So the ones that we've received so far, yeah, confirmed that.
Have there been any residency issues reported yet this year that have been looked into?
So we've, we've completed two. Um, and then I think we have two in the hopper right now that we're currently investigating.
And we're still using a company to do that, or are we doing them in-house again?
We have a, a firm that we partner with, uh, to do, uh, you know, investigations for us, but we do a lot of internal work also.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? I guess I'll just say, uh, hope everybody had a nice, happy Thanksgiving. Had some time to enjoy with your families, recoup a little bit. And as we get into these dark December days, know that spring will be around the corner. So let's be optimistic about it. I sat outside and drove all day today, so. So, um, with that, I'll move on to item 11.02, comments from our superintendent.
Uh, don't know what else to say. I mean, we talked a lot today throughout, uh, just, uh, you know, congrats again to the soccer team. Um, and I think what some of the board members said, i- it is really a community event. You saw the fire truck leading the mow and, you know, uh, things like that. And, and, you know, Marco did a great job getting them, but they love doing it. You know, like, they wanted to come and, and be a part of it, and, um, it's, it's kind of cool. And it doesn't happen that often. Uh, we don't want to get spoiled, right? Cause we had baseball two years ago and soccer, but, um, you know, right? The, the last soccer team was, what would you say, 16 years ago? And, you know, when was the last Final Four we went to? Was it?
Ba- baseball, 2000.
Just, yeah, I said that one, but, but, but other than baseball, the one before that was probably the soccer team, correct?
Baseball. Baseball, 2005.
2005.
Five.
But soccer went after them. Soccer went and, yeah.
It's like two-year cycles.
Yeah.
2005, '07, 2002, 2003.
That's right. Yeah, but it's, it's just not, you know, it's very difficult. You not only need a good team, but you need, you know, um, combination of, confluence of events gets you there. But, uh, uh, when it happens, it's, it's definitely fun. It's definitely fun to ride. So, congrats.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the hearing.
Meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, passes 5-0. Thank you, see you in December.